We're going, okay. Good evening and welcome to the Hyde Park Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for May 22, 2024. Just, we have a large crowd today. Should there be a fire here, don't go through these walls, they won't get you anywhere. But there are two exits you need, the one you came in, or come through these doors and turn left, and there's an exit at the end. No screaming or hollering, just run if there's a fire, okay? Good. Let's begin our evening with a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have, we have a full agenda tonight. Let me first start with, we have proposed approval of minutes for December 21st. I would move, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We have old business, we have some new business, and we have continuing business. So we will have a, an active, an active meeting tonight, and we appreciate everybody coming. And first on is the Anderson Center.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. I would, this is old business, so we don't need to open this, do we? Counselor?
No, the public hearing was closed.
Public hearing was completed.
And extended upon consent from the applicant.
And we have a request for three variances, setbacks for the permit for yard setback, wall height, and letter height. And, good evening.
Good evening.
And my understanding was we have received from the planning board, or whoever we were supposed to receive from? We've received that information, so we are prepared to move ahead. Is there any change in your application as we see it now?
No, there's not.
No, there's not. Are there any public comments about this? We're not in a public hearing anyway, so we don't have to, you guys can't talk anyway. Okay. All right. Therefore, we have a resolution. Paul?
Yep. Resolution 23-21Z, Anderson Center, 11 Hudson Lane, Statsburg, New York, May 22, 2024. Whereas applicant Anderson Center Services Inc. has submitted an application for area variances to allow the construction of new entry gates consisting of walls, masonry pillars, and one sign at 11 Hudson Lane, Statsburg, New York, identified as tax parcel number 133200-6066-02-778644 in the waterfront districts. And whereas the project is depicted on plans prepared by Day Stokosa, hopefully I said that correctly?
Stokosa.
Stokosa, okay, Stokosa. Engineering P L L C entitled amended entrance variance plan revised March 21, 2024, and new entrance plan revised March 24, 2024. And whereas the applicant seeks the first area variance from the zoning law section 108-4 dot 4A2 to allow wall heights as depicted on the submitted plans of 13 feet where the height of 6 feet is allowed, and whereas the applicant seeks a second variance of, from zoning law section 108-24 dot 2F2B to allow letter height of 12 inches for a sign where 10 inches is the maximum, maximum letter height permitted. And whereas the applicant seeks a third variance from zoning law section 108-5115 to permit a front yard setback of 7 feet where 50 feet is required in a waterfront district. And whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section 267-B of the town law and Hyde Park zoning law section 108-33. 6B2 regarding the requested variances. The requested variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. The applicant applied to construct a new front entry wall to enhance the existing entrance in which will be comparable to the existing entries of nearby educational and recreational sites such as Maris College, the Culinary Institute of America, and the Vanderbilt Mansion Historic Site. The proposed wall will be a continuation and improvement of the existing wall on the property. The applicant has submitted revised plans dated March 21, 2024, which further reduced the size of the proposed improvements, and the board finds that the proposed project is in line with the character of the neighborhood. Two, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than these area variances. The applicant seeks to improve and extend the existent, existing wall on the front of the property, which is setback 7 feet from the property line. The applicant also seeks to add signage with lettering that will be easily visible to the traveling public on Route 9. These benefits can only be achieved through the grant of the requested variances. Number three, the zoning board of appeals is required to grant the minimum variance necessary. The requested variances are numerically, numerically, numerically substantial, allowing a 7-foot setback for the proposed wall where a 50-foot setback is permitted, and allowing a wall height of 13 feet where six, where a 6-foot wall height is permitted. However, when considered with the existing nature of the property, the use thereon, and the utility of the improved entryway and the applicable signage, the requested variance, re-variances are appropriate. The increase in letter height is not substantial, given the design speed of Route 9 in the site's vicinity. The added letter height will increase visibility. Before, the requested variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. The proposed signage and entry structures will serve to direct visitors to the property and will further serve to control traffic flow to and from the site. The difficulties are self-created. Be it further resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested variances subject to the following conditions. Pursuant to section 108-33 dot 5F, the authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of issuance, otherwise it is revoked. Two, payment of all fees and escrow.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly, and thank you for the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Chairman, or Madam Chairman?
Yes. James Agarwal's not here. Mr. Donnelly?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
And Chairman McNary?
Yes. Congratulations.
I did have one question. When we talked, you mentioned that some of the reusable rubble was going to be used to straighten out.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
The existing stacks, dry stack stone walls along Route 9.
Yes.
Good. Good luck. We look forward to the new entry.
Thank you, and good luck with these microphones tonight.
Yeah. All right. The next item on the, on the agenda, Schoenberg 202406Z is looking 11 Main Street. Would you join us at the table, please? Looking for two variances, a setback yard setback of 6 inches where 7.5 is required for a, an existing pool deck, and a second setback of 2 feet where 15 is required for a deck attached to a single-family dwelling. Good evening, and would you tell us who you are?
Linda Schoenberg.
Oh.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
If you could first ask if it was published?
I will.
John Schoenberg.
Good. Now, have we, Madam Secretary, have we received, have we read the, what is there?
The public hearing notice was published in the Poughkeepsie Journal on May 15, 2024.
Okay, good. Then I would also move for opening the public hearing.
Motion to open public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Good. Now, tell us about your project.
The project has.
Can you move it up a little bit, so?
Or the handheld one.
Or the handheld one, either one.
How's that?
That's good.
Okay. We are seeking this variance to secure the pool, to fence it properly. Currently, the property is, is completely fenced, but it required a small appendage from a fence on our property to the neighbor's barn. This was installed mid-'90s. Previous owners of the property agreed that I could do this to keep the yard fully fenced in. Since they have left, new, new people have moved in as of 2009, 2009, and we've had a discussion about the property line and where exactly it falls, and this attachment to the neighbor's barn is on their property. So we wound up getting a survey done to update our survey and to make sure that the lines were correct and so on. We found out that indeed this is the case. There's also another small section of fence, a corner actually, on the house deck that extends over the property line by 9 inches. What we're doing is, we hired a fence contractor to come take a look at the circumstance and to address the pool. And also, the fence that's currently on the property ends just about at the beginning of where the barn is on the neighbor's property. And we're wanting to extend that fence down behind the pool so it'll secure the pool. And that's really what's happening. I know that the, I need to get a variance for the pool deck because it did not have a permit. That was my fault. The pool has a, a permit, but I didn't acquire one for the deck, so at this point I need to rectify that, which I'm hoping to do.
What's the width of your property, of your lot?
50 feet.
So it's a narrow lot?
Yes.
And I know those are, that's literally over here.
Yes.
Two houses down.
Two houses down.
And I think the, the lots along there are very narrow. So I did note as we went down the street that the lots have things right on their property line.
Yes.
So you're looking for two variances, one for the pool deck, which now is about 6 inches from the property line.
From the property line.
And between that and the property line, you're going to construct a fence.
Correct.
And behind that, for, for your neighbor is basically a barn, a two, two-piece barn. And then for your deck attached to the house, again, that's what, 7 feet from the, from the property line?
Correct.
Okay. So those are the two variances. Questions?
When you began your statement, you said there was an appendage or something that was built in early, in the mid-'90s? An attachment. I meant where the fence comes on our property, there, it stops just where the barn starts on the other, on the neighboring property. And there was about a 3-foot section that would be open and would allow our dog to run through there, or somebody, the neighbors had small children, they could come through the property. So in, in opening that up, it, it, you know, exposes the pool, and I want to make the pool safe, and that's what we're here for.
Excuse us, maybe this gentleman is our fence gentleman, so maybe we should just let him introduce himself.
Hi, how you doing?
Okay.
Paul, sorry I was late, I didn't realize.
No, that's fine.
First off.
You're fenced in?
Yeah.
Just introduce you.
Yep.
I think, my understanding from the application is that you'll be building the fence almost on the property line.
Correct.
But will you go over the deck, or you're still abutting the pool deck?
Well, we need some guidance. We want guidance so we don't have to come in here looking for forgiveness.
Okay.
Could you please state your name and, your name for the record, please?
Paul, from AVP Fence.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Is there anything in particular that we should be aware of in terms of this? The deck is there already. You're asking basically for forgiveness in terms of putting it 6 inches from the property line. The house or the barn next to it is on the property line, a part of it, or 2 feet off from the property line. The individual can access the large part of its barn with about a 2-foot thing that they have.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions?
You'll still have that 2-foot place in between.
Yes, that will still be.
But the pool will be closed in.
That will still be in.
God forbid somebody drowns, that's what we're afraid of.
Yeah. And you, my understanding is you were also constructing a fence around the pool itself. Is that, that correct?
Yes.
A steel fence, so you have that added safety.
Yes.
So from a pool perspective, it's more, it's safer?
Than it's ever been.
Okay. And is it fair to say you have not, you're really not changing any environmental issues?
No, sir.
And in terms of, of what it looks like in the neighborhood, will this change anything?
No.
Okay.
Let it prove it.
The fence will be butted against your deck.
That's correct.
And there'll be enough room for him to do what he needs to do on his side.
Correct.
And he's going to let you use that to put the fence up.
That's a common law. We could work there, and we're not going to, we're not pitching a tent. We're just going to come in, do it right, and then leave. Make it nice again.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's.
And the fence will end where the rear barn juts out?
Correct.
Because that's on, literally on the property line?
That's on the property line.
Okay. Gentlemen?
We have it all clearly marked. He paid extra for the survey man to put stakes in all the way along, even marked the roof on the wellhouse.
Okay.
I mean, this is a, it's, it's a shame, that's all.
And your neighbors have consented to the placement of the fence?
To the placement of the fence? The fence is going to be on our side of the property line, so it should be fine.
Okay. Question, Counselor, anything? Anything else?
I would just note that even if the board does grant the variances tonight, the New York State Building Code may require certain variances. You should follow up with them in case they require something different.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Are there any other public comments? There being none, I would, I would move that we close the public hearing. Is there a second? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Okay. We have a resolution here. Resolution 2406Z for John and Linda Schoenberg, 11 Main Street, Hyde Park, New York. Whereas the applicant, John and Linda Schoenberg, the property owners, have submitted an application for two variances to change the side yard setbacks for two existing decks at property located 11 Main Street, Hyde Park, New York, 12538, identified as tax parcel 6065-16793258 in the neighborhood core district. Whereas the applicant seeks area variances from the zoning law section 108-5.15 bulk regulations to change the minimum side yard setbacks from 7.5 to .5 feet for the deck pool, and from 15 feet to 2 feet for a yard deck associated with a single-family dwelling. Therefore, therefore, whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section 267B of the town law and Hyde Park zoning law section 108-33.6B2 regarding the requested variance. Requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. A new fence is also being installed along the property line, which will block any visual access between the two decks. Additionally, a new fence will be constructed around the pool to ensure appropriate restriction of access to the pool and the deck area. The benefit sought, number two, the benefit sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the N-area variance. There is no other area on the property to locate the pool and attach deck as property is only 60, 60 feet wide.
50.
50?
50.
50. I beg your pardon. I have 50 in here, I thought I heard 60. Requested variance may be considered numerically substantial. The variance will change the permitted side yard setback from 7.5 to .5 feet, excuse me, and from 15 to 2 feet. However, this house is over 100 years old with a small lot size of 50 feet. The siding flec, the sitting, the siding flexibility for the improvement is therefore limited. Furthermore, the location of buildings close to the lot line is common in this neighborhood core district. The requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. The addition of the new fences on the property will improve the appearance and increase the safety of the pool and the deck area. The difficulties are self-created. Be it further resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested variance subject to the following conditions. Pursuant to section 108-33, 5F1, the authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of issuance, otherwise it is revoked. And number two, payment of all fees and escrow. I have moved, is there a second?
Second.
I would like to make a motion to make an addition.
Yes.
In item three, where it says from 7.5 feet to .5 feet, we should put for the pool deck, and for the 15 feet to the 2 feet, we should put for the house deck.
So accepted.
So it's specific for that distance.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that. So accepted. It's been moved and seconded. Madam Chair or the Secretary?
You got to, you got to pass the change first.
So, a motion to.
All right. A motion to add those clarifications on the setback, side yard setback from 7.5 to .5 for the pool deck, and from 15 feet to 2 feet for the house deck. Is that, okay.
You might want to add, and to approve the resolution as amended.
Okay. All right. First, let's get the, the change in the, in the resolution. I move that, for that change?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then I, okay, I'm moving for the resolution.
With the changes.
With the changes. I saw move. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Yes. Mr. Agarwal?
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Chairman McNary?
Yes. We look forward to the pool.
Thank you.
Good luck.
It's going to get warm. Come on down.
Okay.
Just walk over.
It's just walkovers.
After your next meeting, just walk over.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item is Marcos and Chuck, 23-04Z-2. This is an extension of a previous variance. Madam Secretary, was the public hearing notice published?
Yes, it was published in the Poughkeepsie Journal on May 15, 2024.
Thank you. I would move to open the public hearing.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening. Welcome back.
Thank you.
How come you haven't built this thing yet?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know. Some difficulties, you know? It's just a very, you know, size-specific issue with logistics and everything else.
Could you please state your name for the record?
Yeah, my name is Ralph Meyer.
Thank you.
And I'm the professional on this job when it comes to the planning.
Are there any changes at this point?
There is no change at this point, no.
No changes in the, in the variance that you're seeking?
No changes, no.
Are there, do you anticipate any difficulties in the next year for this?
Yeah, many.
Do you anticipate that this project will get underway?
I did have the first meeting with Don Westermeyer, like, a few days ago. That went very well. I think we presented about 150 plans. So at this point, we are well on the way, and I'm, I'm confident that we're going to get approval within the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
We have a lot of meetings with the contractors as well in regards to logistics, because it is on the waterfront, it is very tight down there. But at this point, I think we do have things fairly under control.
Okay. What's your anticipation of finishing the construction of the house?
Within two years.
Two years, okay. We were looking for the open house this year, but I guess.
Yeah.
Are there, from the board members, any, any questions? Questions? Public? Any? None? There being none, I would move to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I think we have a motion. Do you have a motion? Please, Mr. Agarwal.
Resolution to extend area variance, Nadia, Marcos, and Adrian Chuck, 16 Popping Lane, Hyde Park, 1253, dated today, resolution 22-20Z-2-EXT. Whereas in 2023, the applicants, Nadia, Marcos, and Adrian Chuck, submitted an application for an area variance to allow the demolition and replacement of an existing single-family residence on substantially the same footprint, i.e. the project, at property located at 16 Popping Lane, identified as tax parcel number 606502602972 in the waterfront zoning district. And whereas the project is depicted on a plan prepared by Peter Andros, P E., dated March 24, 2023, entitled Proposed Replacement Single Family Dwelling Variance Plan. Whereas the applicant sought an area variance from zoning law section 108-4.3G2 to permit construction within the Hudson River Stream corridor, the requested variance. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings, findings in accordance with section 108-33.5F2 of the Hyde Park zoning law regarding the requested variance extension. Number one, since the grant of the variances on May 24, 2023, the applicants have completed all design, engineering, and architectural planning, and anticipate submission of structural plans to the town. Two, applicants have faced delay due to the project's location and unexpected complexities with the project. Three, applicants anticipate that construction will commence on the site within one year of this extension. Be it further resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested variance extension subject to the following three conditions. One, the conditions of the May 24, 2023 resolution shall remain unchanged. Two, the authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of the issue, this issuance, otherwise the variances granted on May 24 of last year shall be deemed revoked. And three, payment of all fees and escrow.
Thank you, Mr. Agarwal. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Yes. Mr. Agarwal?
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Chairman McNary?
Yes. We look forward to seeing that thing rise out of the, out of the river. It makes many of us. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay. All right. We have, next is a, is a new Gantor and Altbach, is that correct?
That's correct.
Please come forward. Welcome. Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening.
I'm the applicant, and he's the owner.
Okay, you want to give us a name?
I'm Andreas Skatera.
Good.
My name is Tim Maganire.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, was there a public hearing published on this?
Yes, in the Poughkeepsie Journal on May 15, 2024.
Okay, I would move to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Well, welcome. Tell us what you're thinking about in that house.
Okay.
I have to tell you, you moved in in, in November of 2015, right?
Yes, I see, we moved there, yes.
Oh, okay. They, not me.
She's the architect.
Yeah. I'm the designer, yes.
We looked at it in October of 2015. We looked at it in October of 2015.
Already, I think we bought it at that time, I think we moved in the next following year, 2016, July 4, somewhere in that area.
Okay, okay, welcome, tell us what you're, what you're trying to do here, in terms of the project.
Okay, so what we would like...
Can you move the microphone so, so the public can hear?
Sure, can you hear me? So we are here because we are requesting an area variance for these residents. We would like to do a carport and a screen porch above. So, you know, the residence is located at 14 Scenic Drive, there, the waterfront, the waterfront district. So if you know, the whole residential development was built during the 60s, so it's before, predate zoning. So the lot of the house is really tricky for doing any extension. We are proposing to do the extension for the carport and the screen porch in the side of the house that we think is the best, not only for the clients, if not also for the surrounding properties.
How wide is the lot?
How wide? I think it was...
Because the house on your, on your drawing really takes up...
Right.
Yeah, we got, we got, we got the smallest...
You got the net?
At the time when they designed this whole area there, we just got a strip up.
Right.
And now happens only in this lot, most of the lots are not conforming, because they will, I mean, all the houses were built in the 60s.
So today it's a non-conforming lot?
Yes, actually, so is it like a very, like Andrea said, narrow rectangle lot?
We have a lot of in the front and in the back, but we have not much space on the side.
And the house is already within the setback in one of the sides, so it's very difficult to build there, because we were very close to the follow, to the next house in that property.
Right.
We will be very, like, 30 feet apart.
Mm-hmm.
In the front, it's really difficult also, because we have the septic tank and we have a bedrock. So any intervention in the front of the house will cost a lot of money, it will be significantly.
Did you think about extending the front porch, the second-story front porch out, as a screen porch?
We are extending, if you see at the VR1, we are extending at the left.
I understand that.
Toward the left.
Did you consider, because it has a porch on the front, not very deep?
Oh, that gallery, yes, this is, right, it's like a 5 feet, and also...
You think of making that 8 feet?
And the septic tank is already there, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, the septic tank right there, and the leach field is further down.
And the leach also spread, right, yeah.
Yeah.
And also there is the bedrock, so it's very complicated to do any construction work there, unless we spend a lot of money in there.
Okay.
So the backyard will be another alternative, but we have here two important things to say. One is, of course, the property is looking for the river views, right, because, like, all the lots in the development. But also, if we build in the backyard, the thing, it will, the driveway should be increased. So and also the lot coverage increased, it will increase, sorry, I think is not very convenient either. I mean, we will spending a lot of money also making...
So building the garage, building a garage and a porch back there?
A screen porch, correct.
Okay.
So what we here, we have here is a volume that is two-story, one for the carport, of course, for, for two cars, and the screen porch. So the corner, if you go to the plan VR2, the corner that is closer to, closer to the lot line, it will be 9 feet 10 inches apart from the lot line.
So you have 17 inches on either side for your car to get through? With the average car at 6.5 feet?
We have 20, 20 feet.
It shows on the drawing 9 feet, 9.5 feet.
9.5, 9 feet 10 inches is from the corner of the carport to the lot line.
Right.
And the, then we have an overhang.
Right.
And then the first post will be like a, I think it was 18, 18 feet from the wall of the house, not sure if you follow me.
How are you gonna park the car in the first lot that's closest to the...
We have, how we are going to park the first car, you said?
It looks like a very tight...
It looks, but it fits.
It fits, you have a small car.
Yeah, I, I think I'm gonna do the parking.
Well, and getting out, too.
It seems that if you pushed it back, it might be easier for all those things.
Pushing back the, the whole screen porch and the carport?
Yeah, one, one spot.
The, the thing is also, we wanted to keep, there is a stone wall there, that it makes so difficult to go farther, so we will need to remove that stone wall, it's a thing that we are trying to preserve.
Existing lots.
Can you see the stone wall?
Yeah.
Okay.
What's, what's in the 7 feet 5 inches next to the terrace on this drawing?
That is a terrace, right, that is a...
Staircase?
That's the terrace that it will host stairs to go to the first floor, and also a barbecue stand.
The current house has a garage underneath the house?
Sorry?
Underneath the screen porch, no?
No, there's no screen porch?
At the moment, at the moment, the, the garage is underneath our bedroom.
Underneath the house?
Yeah, underneath the...
So you closed that off and built that out in some way or something?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, all right.
It's like the usual thing, like, under the bedroom, there's a two-car garage.
Question?
I don't have the room, a little bit of the stone wall.
Questions? No? Yep? Counselor?
No.
No? Okay. All right. Anything else we should know about the project? Looks like an interesting project, you're gonna, what kind, how big is your car?
Mercedes.
Oh, a big Mercedes.
GL350, and...
Really long and wide.
It's, it's actually still not the, if I go to the city and I look for parking, it's not the oversized SUV, it's the regular kind.
Once we get, once you have this built, can we have a video of you parking?
I'm sure.
Okay.
It will be very easy, I promise you.
Okay.
I think we're gonna figure that one out.
Okay. I, I still think you're gonna have, that's not a lot of trouble, that's not a lot of room to move your car. But I do understand, when you look at the drawing, the other side is within, looks like, well, their house is closer to the lot line than the other house on the lot.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Okay, so that's the logical, I guess one of the questions was, could you put, put the porch on the other side, and you're right on the, right on the lot?
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions? No. Questions? Okay, public, is there anybody from the public? Make comments? Okay, I would entertain, close, I would move to close the public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? I think we have a resolution, who has it? Do you have?
Rich.
I think Rich has it.
Rich has it, you? Red.
Red. Resolution to grant area variance to Andres Gutierrez and Zara Altback. Whereas the applicants, I said at once, have submitted an application for an area variance to change a side yard setback for the construction of a screen porch with a carport below, attached to an existing single-family dwelling at property located at 14 Scenic Drive, Hyde Park, tax parcel number 606502721979, in the waterfront zoning district. Whereas the project is depicted on the plan entitled Addition and Renovation of Residents Located at 14 Scenic Drive, Hyde Park, prepared by Donier...
Imaganira, yes.
...Design, dated April 29, 2024. Whereas the applicants seek an area variance from the zoning law section 108, 5.15, to submit a side yard of 9 feet 10 inches where 25 feet is required. Whereas pursuant of NYCRR 617.5C17, the granting of an area variance for a single-family, two-family, three-family residence type 2 action under State Environmental Quality Review Act is not subject to the act. Whereas, whereas, therefore be it resolved, the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section 267B of the Town Law of Hyde Park, zoning law section 108-33.6B2 regarding requested variance. The requested variance will not produce undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. This neighborhood is a residential development from the 60s, predate zoning, resulting in non-conforming lots in many of these properties. Most of the houses contain, contain elevated screen porches to enjoy the river views. The nearest house will be 92 feet away from the addition, which is a significant distance considering the sizes of the lot. Benefits sought by the applicants cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicants to pursue other than an area variance. A new carport is necessary because the existing garage will be converted into a family room. There are no feasible, feasible alternatives. The placement on either side of the house would block neighbor, on the other side of the house would block neighbors' river views. That side of the house is already encroached into the side setback, as it is the case with the neighbor's house, so the new addition and neighbor's house would be uncomfortably close. The setback tank, leach field are in front of the house, and its relocation would entail significant financial effort. There is also extensive bedrock, which makes excavation difficult in that area. Building a rear yard would entitle, entail building a new driveway at significant cost with increased, impervious lot, coverage of the lot. The proposed location is the most convenient and will be built over an existing driveway. Requested variance is not numerically substantial, only a trapezoidal section of the addition will be within the setback, constituting less than half the total addition. The corner of the addition, therefore, the corner of the addition nearest to the lot line will be setback 9 feet 10 inches out of the 25 feet required, gradually increasing to a distance of 23 feet 4 inches. The requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the general neighborhood, unless you have wild parties, or a district, since the addition will be built over the existing blacktop driveway. The difficulties are self-created, however, the characteristic of the non-conforming lot, along with the owner's new needs, make the proposed location of the addition the most economic, convenient, and practical. It is therefore resolved, the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested variance, subject to the following conditions. Pursuant to section 108-33-5F1, the authorized activity must commence within one year of the date of issuance, otherwise it is revoked. Payments and all fees and rescrue.
Mr. Perkins has moved, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, Madam Secretary?
Yes.
Please.
Mr. Agarwal.
Yes.
Mr. Donley.
Yes.
Mr. Perkins.
Yes.
Chairman McNary.
Yes. Congratulations, we look forward to seeing the screen porch out there.
Thank you.
And we really want to see you park your car.
I've been watching you every evening, you know, I've sent you a video.
Good, good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and now we come to the quiet time of the night. We are continuing the public hearing on Shenni Land Holdings, 24-01Z, 2450 Route 9G, Hyde Park, appealing the zoning administrator's determination to deny application for the site plan approved for proposed development in the Greenbelt zoning district of the town of Hyde Park. I would move to open the public hearing, is there a second? Is there a second? Please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Welcome.
Hi.
Let me, just before we get going, I know there are a lot of people that want to comment, and so, at the last meeting, you had an opportunity to go through the document that you've added to us here, so I would ask if there's anything new or any new perspective that you want to give us in terms of your application for, for changing the decision.
Okay.
So would you please identify yourselves first, please?
Yeah, good evening, Victoria Polidoro, Rodenhausen Shaw Polidoro.
Kelly Leibolt, KARC Planning Consultants.
Amy Argerakis, KARC Planning Consultants.
Good, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will try to be brief, I appreciate your comments. As you had indicated, we were before you last month, at which time we did provide you with an in-depth summary of this particular project, a lot of factual information that we had provided to you.
Did you move the microphone closer?
It's, is that better?
I have watched the meeting three times since then, and the microphone is terrible.
They're terrible.
So just put it as close as you can.
I'll pretend I'm yelling at my family members.
Good, that's fine.
Okay. With umps. We also conducted a site visit with some members of the ZBA, and there were questions that were raised at the last zoning board, by the zoning board members, and also at the site visit. We did provide you with detailed responses to each of those questions. We thought we would just take a very brief overview of those, so that's in the public record, and it's available to the public that's here tonight, if that's okay with you, I'll try to go as quickly as I can.
Yeah, let me confirm publicly, four of the five members of the board did visit, did a site visit out about two weeks ago, and we appreciate the, the time it took to explain the project.
Perfect, thank you. So, the, what I had done is, just to keep us kind of focused, is I listed the nine broad questions that were raised at this zoning board meeting, and also at the site visit. So there's a list of those nine, I'm on slide three.
Okay.
The first is a question relative to the project parcel and the deed. And so we did submit to you the deed for this project, I just want to make note of that. According to the Hyde Park definition of a lot, this does meet the definition of a lot, and again, the deed was provided to you in the submission that we provided last week.
Okay.
The second question was to provide samples of the elevations of some of the buildings, the cottage buildings, and so we did provide you with some typical college, cottage elevations for your use. I just want to make note that, really, all of these structures are one-story, they are predominantly one- and two-story structures, and this is consistent with the structures in the surrounding area and the existing structures on site. So for those of you who completed a site visit, I think you saw some of the existing buildings that were out there.
Mm-hmm.
I bring that up because this is just similar massing, although this portion of the project is in the town of Clinton, this is very similar massing to the existing buildings that are on-site and in the surrounding community.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. So, I should have asked this when I was there, these buildings are very modern, when I was on the site, it looked very historical. Any buildings gonna be destroyed and taken down that exist right now?
There are a few structures that will be removed, again, all of those are in the town of Clinton. It's important to note that when we proceed with applications like this that do have some historic nature, we coordinate with the New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation. We call it OPRHP, so short. We're required to submit the project to OPRHP and receive their sign-off, so this project was submitted to OPRHP, in fact, it was submitted two times. The first time before the parking lot was relocated up by the Equine Center, and the second time after the parking lot was relocated up by the Equine Center, and in all instances, the OPRHP signed off on the project indicating that there'll be no impact to historic resources. So that information was provided to the town of Clinton.
There's like, I think there's like, what, three major structures?
Correct.
And the...
Those will not be removed, sorry, if that's your question, the historic structures will not be removed.
So, so which ones will be removed?
There is a building, when you come up the driveway to the right, and it actually looks like a historic building, but it was recently built, that building will be removed, and a series of sheds and some other smaller equipment buildings.
Okay.
Okay. Please continue.
The next question was to provide a link to the website, I won't go into detail about this, but we did provide you with a link to the website, this is just an image of what the website looks like for your use. It's important to note that, again, I'll remind you that in order to gain access to the site, you must register for a program through the website, and there will be no third-party bookings, so there's no national chains or any type of chain that will be able to book for this facility, for this conference center, it's all through their website. The next question pertained to the entrance locations and their purpose. This was sort of a broad question, so I'll just be very specific in our response. We did provide you with an aerial photograph, again, showing the location of the driveway entrance relative to the entire lot. We did give you some historic information here, this is an old photograph from 1936, and it illustrates that this... thirty-six, and it illustrates that this access has been there since nineteen thirty-six, even before that time, so nearly eighty years this access road has been present. Interesting to see that nine G was actually relocated, so this shows access to the old north-south roadway. In two thousand and five, moving forward in two thousand and five, when this application was before the town of Clinton and of course involving the town of Height Park, the driveway access was in the exact same location as it is today. And on the next slide, I will show you, this is the location of the access point, I'm going quick, so I'm sorry, I know you were asking me to be brief.
Okay, we're fine.
So if anyone gets confused, please stop me. This illustration just shows the location of the proposed access points for this project. Again, there is a existing ingress egress on the site, again, has been there for almost eighty years. The proposal is to relocate that access point, that apron, on nine G slightly to the north. Why? Better site distance, more queuing and space for vehicles when they're coming in off of nine G before they cross over the bridge, provides a safer ingress egress. That northern entrance is proposed as the primary entrance for this facility. There is a proposed second entrance, which is south of the site, and we've showed you some illustrations of this, that is predominantly for purposes of deliveries and emergency services. It is important to note that this relocated access apron on the north part of the site was contemplated back in two thousand and five when the town of Clinton reviewed this project, so this isn't a new relocation or suggested relocation or reconfiguration of the driveway. So that was discussed, again, back in two thousand and five. My understanding is that it was approved, I need to document that, but has not yet been completed. Another point that I want to make is that this access drive is, is not a driveway, but is actually a mapped street, and what I mean by mapped street is, this is a road system that is on file with Dutchess County nine-one-one, so this particular property, the structures on this property do not have addresses that are New York State Route nine G. Each of the structures on this property have an address linked to these mapped streets. So that driveway, what we're calling a driveway, is a mapped street. It was indicated back in nineteen eighty, it was switched from a driveway to a mapped street, it was originally called High Cure Road, later it was changed to Naylor Road, and as of last year in twenty twenty-three, that road is on file with New York State and with Dutchess County nine-one-one as Old Stone Farm. So again, all of the structures on that property, if you look up their addresses, they're linked to either Old Stone Farm or Mill Pond Road, so there's another north-south mapped street that goes through the site, so I just want to make sure that that is on the record. Okay, so we can just go through, these are the, on the slides that you have, again, these are just blow-ups of the north entrance and just blow-ups of that south entrance, for your record. The next, three questions pertain to the site programming, so broadly the site programming. So it was the booking process, possible overnight stays, sizes of events, types of events, frequency of events, and then the onsite dining, so I'll kind of lump all of those into this next narrative. We did provide you with this drawing that was our programmatic matrix, and it's very detailed, that shows the types of events, the sizes of events. We also provided you with a narrative of how someone would book an event. It's important to note that this proposed use is the same as the existing specially permitted use that was granted by the town of Clinton in two thousand and five, so nothing is changing. The use of the property is not changing, the applicant is simply asking to expand those uses, and in doing so, expand the structures that are on the site.
But you're, you're expanding the, the number that would participate significantly.
That's correct, yes, correct. This site is unique, we had indicated this at the last meeting, so all Sixth Sense's facilities are unique, we, we talked about this, they all offer different types of programs, some are lodging-driven, some are program-driven, this facility is program-driven. The current facilities offer space for classes, seminars, gatherings, equine, and so forth, so again, there isn't a modification in the use, it's the intensity of the use and the increased buildings to support the proposed use. As far as the events and the programs are concerned, we did talk about at the last meeting, the site would offer small, medium, and large types of events, those are all detailed in that programmatic guide, I can go through that with the board if you'd like me to, I think we touched on it at the last meeting, okay? We also talked about overnight stays, so overnight stays are program-driven, again, the site is not for transient residents, that they can come and secure lodging only. We did provide a narrative about how someone books, the whole sequence of, of steps for someone who likes to book a program, and what would trigger or warrant an overnight stay.
My understanding is a participant could stay at a hotel off-site, is that correct?
They could, that is correct.
Have you considered that everybody stays off-site?
We have not, overnight lodging is considered an accessory use under the zoning code in the town of Clinton.
Okay.
In addition, there are existing overnight lodging facilities at this, or overnight units at this facility now, so again, the existing use is a conference center, and overnight stays can be an accessory use to that existing use. We talked about whether or not, again, someone can trigger an overnight stay, so again, if someone is registering for a singular event that occupies one day, that does not automatically warrant them to stay overnight. If someone is staying for multiple days, then the opportunity exists for them to stay overnight, if lodging is not available in the surrounding area, we will assist them with trying to find alternative overnight in Height Park and Reinbeck and some of the other areas.
Okay.
Dining, I think there were questions relative to the dining on-site, and there were questions of, is this a public restaurant? So this is not a public restaurant, so dining is available for attendees and programees, it is included in their program fee and within their program itself. So again, it's offered as part of a package. They do not receive a separate bill, as if we were all to go to a restaurant and receive a separate bill for our food, it's included in their program. There is not a bar that provides individual drinks and bar service, so wine will certainly be offered, it will be incorporated into dining, in most instances, it's going to be tied to a program. So for example, there may be wines that are offered or being showcased as part of current wine classes, there may be wines that are offered as part of affiliate nutritional programs with local restaurants or local chefs. Okay, moving on to the next item is the question pertained to the cost to attend and the benefit to the community. So the applicant has certainly invested in the community and in the viability of their business. The costs for the programs have not yet been determined, of course, this project is not yet approved, and much of the cost of programs are based on the overall cost of the construction.
Now, informally, at, at our site visit, we did ask that question, and I think the answer was that the per diem there with program and staying overnight is somewhere in the range of fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars a day, is that still?
I, I think that it's going to vary depending upon the overall cost of the project, but I don't think that that's outside of the realm of the typical cost.
Okay.
Um, there was a question relative to community benefits, I think that that was asked, although it's not required for any applicant in any project in the town of Height Park, the applicant is proposing multiple ways to engage the community. So they are proposing a resident discount card, there will be community days where they will host specialized programs specifically for the immediate community, there will be farm share programs, so excess farm products, so again, this is an agrarian-themed approach, can be provided off-site or to other restaurants or other food-related facilities in the area. There'll be outreach programs to give back to various community projects, affiliation programs with the culinary and with other restaurants that are in the area, they do provide what's called a sustainability fund, and so with all Sixth Sense's, there's a percentage of total revenues from the property operation that is contributed to a fund in the local community, and then of course, employment, we've talked about this, so this isn't just simply employing staff, which of course is important, but they selected this particular location because the Hudson Valley is well-known for the agriculture, the arts, and just culture and history. So the applicant is really interested in utilizing local experts and local talent to lead many of these programs and lead and define many of the events that are offered The next question pertained to just overall conference center and the camp definition, and this question came up when we were talking about Camp Victory Lake, and if you recall, this is another application in the town of Height Park, that was before your Z E O and before the town planning board, and what we have provided for you is just a summary of the Z E O's decision for that particular application. So again, in the town of Height Park, applicants are, applications are presented to the Z E O in your community, the Z E O reviews the documentation to determine whether or not the application can proceed to the planning board. In this particular instance, Camp Victory Lake applied back in two thousand and eighteen for a conference center and an expansion of an existing conference center and camp. That particular application made it through the Z E O process, that particular application is similar to this one in that it is in the Green Belt zoning district. I will spare you all of the details that we provided at the last meeting, but just remind you that this particular application did go through the planning board process, again, in the Green Belt zoning district, it received approval as a conference center in two thousand and twenty-three. In fact, many of the drawings that are provided in their application materials use very similar terminology and names for their buildings as the current application that's before you tonight, such as gatehouse, expanded wellness centers, modern-style lodging, and a pool, some buildings are even labeled as a motel, which is prohibited uses. So why are we providing this information? So the, the scale of this project, which interestingly enough, this project is allowing up to one thousand four hundred and forty-nine people to stay overnight, a night, so the scale of this building, the cost of this project and so forth, is, really has no relevance to this project. The reason that we presented it to you was to show you an example of another project in the Green Belt zoning district, applied for a conference center use, and unlike this particular application, was processed through the Z E O and was processed through the planning board, so we think that that's a very important precedent for you to be aware of.
Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Uh, and going back to Camp Victory Lake, though, that's seasonal, my understanding, is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Do you want to reply to that?
I don't believe there's any restriction on it being seasonal.
There's no, I'm sorry, say it again, please.
They may use it seasonally, but I do not believe it is restricted to seasonal use.
They clearly, though, that is the pattern that they have had since they've been here, is a seasonal.
I'm, I'm not sure, I mean, how would we keep track of whether someone was using the property or not?
Well, I mean, the thirty or forty years they've been here, that has been, it's been a summer, a summer event, yeah, okay.
Well, that, okay.
Also, if you look at the website, it does say, their own materials do say year-round.
I'll, I'll look at that, I did look at the Sixth Sense's website today, and I saw lots of references to hotels and spas and no mentions of camp or, or conference centers.
Right, so that, that goes back to what we were talking about earlier, which is that each project is unique, and while marketing may use terms that are recognizable in every municipality throughout the country, to every person throughout the country, we're dealing with specific definitions and uses as defined by Hard, Height Park under its home rule powers, so, you know, the, this project previously called itself a dude ranch. You're not going to find a definition for dude ranch in every municipality in the state of New York, so you have to look at what that constituted.
So you're telling me that if this project went through on the website, it would say five-star camp in Height Park?
Well, again, marketing and use are different, when, when you market your house for sale, you don't say single-family dwelling, you say, you know, single-family residence, or we use different terminology in everyday language.
So what you're saying in your marketing is not true?
Well, like, for instance, you have, you have some hotels in Height Park, do they call themselves hotels or do they call themselves lodging facilities? They probably market themselves as a hotel, which is not a use in Height Park.
Marketing can be very misleading by definition.
Yes.
In anything.
It can be, yes.
Okay. The website is, looks very high-end and very much of a certain clientele, like, when you go on the, on the homepage, here's a Bentley, I mean, that's like a three-hundred-thousand-dollar car, so I see, and like, you're talking about camp, like, I mean, like-
So I think, I mean, it sounds to me like you're thinking of camp as someone sleeping on the ground rubbing two sticks together, right? That's sort of an old-fashioned concept of what a camp-
Actually, we wouldn't allow that.
Right, you might not even allow it, but camping has evolved, and if you look throughout the country, there are examples of campsites, you know, they offer food service, they offer private bathrooms, they offer individual cabins, so I think what you're thinking in your head isn't necessarily what the definition is of a camp in Height Park.
What about, you gotta think about when the zoning was created and what the intent was, and I am sure that camping meant camp.
Rubbing two sticks together?
No, it meant tent, cabin, RV.
It's, I, I can't guess what the intent was in two thousand and five when the zoning law was adopted, but if you, you have to construe zoning in favor of the landlord.
I might be able to guess, I might have been on the committee that-
Well, maybe you have some insight, but, you know, the town intended to define a camp definition as something different than a lodging facility definition, right? They, they both allow overnight stays, but there has to be something different about them, and when you look at the definitions, the difference really is that one has to do with recreational and instructional uses, that's how your town has defined a camp use.
So you're defining this, your project as a camp, is that correct?
Yeah, we believe it falls under the camp use in the town of Height Park, which is defined very broadly and focuses on recreational and instructional purposes.
Well, I think maybe whether it's defined broadly or being interpreted broadly is the difference.
Well, I'll leave that to your capable hands, but-
So it's defined as a camp, but marketed in a different fashion?
Just like hotels are not marketed as a lodging facility.
If this ends up being successful financially, what's to prevent Sixth Sense from running with this thing and crossing the line between camp and lodging, meaning transients come in, they pay to stay, is there anything legal that you have to participate in a program to spend the night there, or can that change?
So, it, it's interesting, because in, on the town of Clinton's side of the property, it's the same set of restrictions, which is that it has to be a program-based facility, and so Clinton, if it moves forward with the approval, will require the program-based nature of the facility as part of any approval, and it'll be an enforcement issue after that, the same as anyone using their house, you know, for renting it out or short-term rentals, it's always enforcement after something's approved.
Do you want to add it where the town of Clinton, the Z B A or their board is with your project? Because I don't know.
Can you repeat the question?
Where is the town of Clinton in their decision-making process?
So the town of Clinton issued a determination that this was not a hotel, but that it was a conference center, as Clinton defines that use.
And how do they define a conference center?
I can pull that up.
Versus Height Park?
In Clinton, a conference center is defined as, "an establishment for hire, as a location for events, used for business or professional conferences and seminars, often with rooms for lodging, eating, and recreational activities," and then there's a second part, "also, an establishment which, which attracts clients principally for recreational or health activities, and contains room for lodging and eating for its clients."
Do they define camp?
They do not, um, I don't know if they have a definition of camp, I don't believe so.
So they don't have a definition of camp, what you're saying for us, it's a camp?
Correct, just like in two thousand and five, at the time, it was a dude ranch in Clinton, but a camp in Height Park.
Did Clinton approve this project?
I'm sorry.
So Clinton has not approved the project at this point because we are, where we are right now is that there's no access under Ms. Moss's determination, and so we can't move forward without resolving this issue.
Actually, Clinton does have a camp, and they suggest that no camp shall be operated during the months of November through March.
Right, so Clinton's camp definition is not relevant- Right, so Clinton's camp definition is not relevant. This is a conference center in Clinton.
So on our side, it's a camp, on their side, it's a conference center.
It's, it's all about the way terms are defined. I mean, I know people are laughing, but zoning is, is interesting.
No, I mean, it's important because we're defining it in a certain way, and we have been very clear in terms of, of what the zoning administrator made a decision based on a certain definition. So it's important to understand.
So, for instance, Camp Victory Lake, under the definition that Mr. Perkins just read, would not be able to operate year round if it were located in the town of Clinton, because there's a restriction on time periods. Clinton also didn't include the language that Hyde Park has, which is that it must be for recreational or instructional purposes.
Well, I'm sorry, the Hyde Park definition of camp also suggests a limited stay of six months.
Correct. And, and this project, you know, no one can stay more than 29 days at this.
Well, no, but your operation is going to be year round.
Yeah, operation will be a full year, but one person can't stay.
Well, I read the camp definition to say no one person can stay more than six months. I don't think it limits the operation of the facility to six months.
That would defeat the purpose of regulations, wouldn't it?
I don't think it's defined it.
I would just like to add that Camp Victory Lake comes in under a religious use, has a special use permit and site plan, and then all the other uses are accessory to that. And that's subject to Aralupa or whatever that.
Right. And that's been for some time, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, please continue. Any, let me, I didn't mean to interrupt. Other questions you got right now?
Not right now.
Okay, all right. Please continue.
Sure, it's perfect timing because I am completing the portion of our presentation right now. I just want to point out that we have provided you, sorry, bring this closer, we have provided you with a lot of information.
Yes, you have.
It has taken quite some time to pull together this information. At this point, we will turn the project over. I think you may want to just do one final close on some of the opposition discussion, and then we'll turn this project over to you.
Yes, because we've still got a lot of conversation tonight.
We sure do, yep. Yeah, so, I mean, just quickly touching on Camp Victory Lake, the Ms. Moss's determination, which we did receive through the FOIL request, doesn't say that the use is religious, and in fact, their own application materials call the use a mix of religious and camp and conference center. So they self identified some of the uses as being.
But they're classified initially as a religious, and we have to consider.
I, I leave that for you to determine. I'm just saying that the application materials don't necessarily state as much, the ones that are available, and they're on the website, if you want to take a look at them. So just again, reiterating some of the things that we heard at the last hearing and that you're likely to hear again. This is not a nonconforming use in the town of Clinton. What is being proposed in the town of Clinton complies with the regulations for a conference center. So there's no attempt here to expand something that's nonconforming, or to, to do something outside of what is permitted on that lot. You're also going to continue to hear lots of characterizations of the project as large and massive and out of scale. These are all just attempts to bias your thinking away from the strict interpretation of what is the use into something else. Hyde Park has not defined these uses by their size. Neither commercial recreation or camp have a size limit. Where Hyde Park wanted to identify or limit a use by size, it has done so. So for example, a bed and breakfast, which also has overnight accommodations, limits the number of transient guests to 10, and that's right in the definition. So all of this talk about large, massive, out of scale, those are just opinions and they're just chatter, and we just ask that you don't consider them.
But you're talking size wise of 15 bed and breakfasts, then?
Okay. But I'm not saying we are bed and breakfast. I'm saying that where, bed and breakfast is defined by its size, a camp is not.
Okay.
So it doesn't matter how big or large, how large or small a project is.
It is also defined as the exception, one of the exceptions in, in that area, right?
To a lodging facility.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Okay.
I'm just saying that, you know, the planning boards work through all of the traffic, the environmental, those, those sorts of things. We're really asking you to, to weigh in on the, the granular question of what is the use? Does it fall within that broad definition?
Okay. If Hyde Park grants, does Clinton follow suit, and if Hyde Park denies, they deny, or you don't know?
We don't know.
So Clinton is deliberating at this point. We heard their deliberations at the last meeting. We don't have a decision yet, but we will get you a copy of it. It is forthcoming because they're running up against their 62 day time period.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we, we would just like to reserve a few minutes at the end to address the board.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your presentation and the extra information. Let's have a stand up break, so everybody is alert for the next. Okay, we'll bring you, bring everybody back to order, we appreciate that. I would like to ask Mr. Raplansky, would you come forward? Let me just, Mr. Raplansky, you did not have an opportunity the last time, I know, oh, by the question, how are your grandchildren?
They are great, thank you very much. And I wanted to thank you for your courtesy in allowing me to come here tonight and speak.
No, we, we appreciate that.
Very fair of you.
We'd like you to, I know you have submitted a, a good bit of information, but we want, want to have the opportunity to hear from you.
Sure.
And then following your comments, if there are other people in the public that want to make comments, we, we are going to ask that, you got signed up?
Yes.
Oh, we got a whole bunch signed up. It'll be about, we ask that you limit it to three minutes and that you don't necessarily repeat what your friend said before, just add something new, but we'll, we'll go on.
Sir?
Again, I'm Juan Raplansky, I'm an attorney from Rhinebeck, New York, and I represent a, a group of neighbors to this project, both in the town of Clinton and the town of Hyde Park, who are very concerned about the enormous, potentially enormous impacts of this large scale project. And I, again, I thank you for allowing me to come here tonight and speak and not closing the public hearing at the last meeting. It's very fair of you. The letter that I, I submitted since the last meeting, I've actually submitted two letters to the board, one dated March 28th and 2024, and the other dated May 17th, 2024. The, the letter that I've submitted and the reason for me being here tonight is to reinforce my client's opposition to C E C N's wise appeal of the letter determination of the town's zoning administrator. We feel that the zoning administrator made absolutely the correct determination in denying the application, and for many, many reasons, that we have provided arguments as to why it was the correct decision. And if you read Ms. Moss's decision, you can see they're well thought out, and she cited absolutely the correct decisional law in New York, which is the prime issue in this case. And the issue is that when you have a project, a unified project in two either zoning districts or, or in two adjoining municipalities, like we have here, if the project is not permitted in, in one municipality, the other property in the adjoining district cannot allow that use to happen. So in this case, the determination was, the driveway was providing access to a conference center. We think it's a hotel, but it's at the very least a conference center, which is a use that's not permitted in the town of Hyde Park. And as a result, the, the application to utilize the 8.8 acre property in the town of Hyde Park as the prime access, there are going to be two accesses over the Hyde Park property, had to be denied under plethora of case law supporting Ms. Moss's decision. And we've analyzed that case law and set it out for you, and I provided it to your attorney. I'm sure your attorney will properly advise you as to what the law is. The, the first thing I'd like to mention tonight is this argument that this is a, a camp. It's absolutely preposterous. It's, it's, the, the comment was that at least a couple of you made that, how can you have a unified project where it's in one town, it's, it's, it's a camp, and the other town, it's a large scale conference center? Well, the answer is you can't. They have to be, if they're one unified project, they have to comply with that decisional law. You can't create a, a horse by having half of a horse with a head and legs, and then the bottom half from a camel, simply because the camel has legs and a tail, and then call that a horse. And that's what they're trying to do here. But the biggest problem that they have with their appeal to this board is that there was no application made to the zoning administrator for a camp. The application made no mention of a camp on the Hyde Park property. It made no mention of a camp on the, in the Clinton property. There are no plans for a camp. I think the original plans that were submitted for the Hyde Park property called for two driveways, a bridge, a staging area for golf carts, and a parking area that was going to service the hotel or conference center on the other side. No mention whatsoever of a camp. And then they, when the application was turned down and the applicant realized that they had a serious problem with the use in the town of Hyde Park, and I think they have a serious problem in Clinton, the, all of a sudden, they came up with this idea that no, it's, it's not a conference center, it's not a hotel, it's, it's a camp. The problem is, they didn't make application to the zoning administrator, administrator for a camp. So this is a, I'm sure your attorney would advise you, the Z V A is a, is a board of limited jurisdiction, you're an appellate board. You can only act on appeals. So the appeal was from the denial of the application for access to a conference center or a hotel. It was not an appeal from a denial of an application for a camp. So no matter what else you decide, this application has to go back to, to the zoning administrator so that the applicant can provide plans and an application indicating why this is a camp. Now, I don't know how they're going to do that because it's only 8.8 acres and there's no, there's no camp facilities, there's nothing on, on that 8.8 acres except for the proposed driveway, but they have to do that. Otherwise, you don't have jurisdiction over that issue. So that's a real problem for them, and I leave that up to them to, to solve it.
Can I question?
Sure.
You were talking about a camp on, on one town versus a conference center on the other, and they're incompatible. Neither side can tell the other side that they have to change.
They don't have to change, but Hyde Park, according to the case law that we've cited, and it's, if you notice, the applicant has not challenged any of that case law. I don't believe they submitted anything which indicated that the cases relied upon by Ms. Moss or us in arguments were incorrect or not applicable to this, to this case. But the case law is that if you are using the Hyde Park property as part of an integrated project, and they did make application as an integrated project, we, I put that in my letter, they mentioned that in their, in their application, you have to, in order to approve it in Hyde Park, it has to be for a use that's permitted in, in the town of Hyde Park, according to that case law. And that's why it was denied, and those are the cases that, that had been, I don't know how you can get around that. You can't have an integrated project that's a camp in one, one portion of it and a large scale conference center or hotel in another portion. It makes no sense. In addition, the one thing that's clear is that the town of Hyde Park zoning code does not permit conference centers or hotels as part of its zoning code in the Green Belt zoning district. So this is a very, fairly, not fairly, a very transparent effort to circumvent the, the restrictions in your zoning, which don't permit the, the conference center or hotel in the town of Hyde Park.
I just want to clarify, during the break, zoning administrator Moss did point out that conference center, though undefined and not listed on the schedule of uses permitted, is actually permitted in the St. Andrews district.
In the what?
St. Andrews district.
Yes. No, I didn't, did I say not in the whole town? Only in the Green Belt. I, I apologize for that. There's, the, the intent was that the, it would be prohibited in the Green Belt district. I'm not sure what other districts, to be honest, it's, it's prohibited in. But, you know, the, the applicant has argued that you have to treat this application in a manner which achieve, which in accordance with common sense. Well, you also, if you apply common sense, you can't apply their arguments to achieve an absurd result. And the absurd result is that by calling this thing a camp, and it's not a camp, I mean, you all realize that, just to circumvent the requirements of the town of Hyde Park code is illegal. It, it, it can't be done. So we urge you, even if you ignore the fact that you don't have jurisdiction over the application that's presently presented to you, the, to, to deny the application on those grounds. And I've, I've rehashed those arguments in my letter, I'm not going to go over it now. I just hope that you will read it and get, consult with your attorney as to the legal aspects of, of this case. Again, though, there are no camping facilities shown on either the application to Hyde Park, and certainly no camping facility shown on the application to the town of Clinton. The Victory Lake argument is preposterous. I mean, Victory Lake is a nonconforming use. It's been in existence for over 50 years. The applicant argued to the board that they just approved an application for a conference center. That's not true. Victory Lake has long been established and used as a religious, primarily as a religious facility. And I provided some evidence in Victory Lake's documentation indicating that it is in fact a religious facility. As a religious facility, they are protected by Aralupa. They, they, they are exempt from many aspects of the zoning code. And that's why Victory Lake is allowed and has been allowed to exist, even though it really doesn't comply with the town of Hyde Park's zoning law. So to ignore that fact and just argue that, oh, by the way, the town just approved Victory Lake a few months ago as a conference center is, is, is not right, and you, you shouldn't accept that argument. And it's not uncommon for religious institutions such as Victory Lake, which is a member of the Christian Camp and Conference Association and Association of Adventist Camp Professionals, to have accessory uses to their facilities, such as educational facilities, camps, and, and conference centers, but these are religious conference centers. They would not be able to have those facilities unless they had the protection of Aralupa and the protection under the town's zoning law for religious institutions. The, as I The, as I indicated before, if you apply the rule of statutory construction, and I cited this in my letter, a basic consideration in the interpretation of a statute is the general spirit and purpose underlying its enactment. And that construction is to be preferred, which furthers the object, spirit, and purpose of the statute. So, I ask you, what was the obvious intent, spirit, and purpose of the statute? Was it intended to permit this proposed use or not? That's a decision you're going to have to grapple with. But our argument is that when you look to the spirit and the language of the code, you must deny, uphold the determination of your zoning administrator. The applicant has argued consistently that there is ambiguity in the code, and because there's ambiguity, it has to be interpreted in fellow, in favor of the applicant. That's not absolute, that's not really correct. There is no ambiguity in the code. There's no, your code is very non-ambiguous. It's clear, it's straightforward. The ambiguity is in what Sixth Senses is trying to sell here in Hyde Park and sell in the town of Clinton to get this project through. And they're creating the ambiguity by constantly changing what they are proposing for this facility. They didn't come in, in their initial application before, to the zoning administrator or to the board in Clinton for a camp. They came in with an application for a conference center. Once they realized that they had some serious legal issues and problems with that tack, all of a sudden, it became a camp in Hyde Park and a conference center in Clinton. It just, it just can't happen. Finally, it was not, the issue was not raised again, but in my first letter to the board, I also argued and provided a host of decisional law that the fact that in a period of 19 years, the Town of Clinton did not take action to deny or to enforce their zoning law, to say, no, you can't operate a conference center or a hotel on your property, cannot be invoked against the town, either of Clinton or Hyde Park, to prevent the town from now enforcing its zoning law. There is no such thing as estoppel in a case of zoning a municipality, even if it issues a permit to improperly or makes a mistake and issues a permit, can always reverse that if the permit was issued in error. In this case, there was never any permit issued here in the town of Hyde Park. There were applications that were made in Clinton, and they were made under the guise of a dude ranch with a accessory holistic, small-scale conference center. That's what was sent on to the Town of Hyde Park. It wasn't noticed. I mean, nobody, it wasn't, it didn't raise any red flags. But this raised the red flag because of the intensity and scale of the use. You indicated it's a bed and breakfast 12 times over. I mean, it's actually more than that. And that caught the attention properly of the Town of Hyde Park. And the courts have consistently held that by not taking any action to enforce your zoning, you don't lose your right to later enforce your zoning. And I've provided case law, which I'm sure your lawyer has read. In fact, there's a famous case that I cited where a permit was issued for a 30-story building, I don't remember how many stories it was, in New York City improperly, and they were sued. And they had to tear down, I believe, 10 stories of that building. I mean, that's, fortunately, in this case, there's, nothing has happened yet on that property. But we think that if you consider all of the documentation and evidence in your own zoning law and the precedent which we've supplied, you'll reach the conclusion that the decision of your zoning administrator was absolutely correct, and we urge you to uphold that decision.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moss.
Thank you.
Any, from the board, any questions? Counsel, any?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess I have one.
Oh, Mr. Finesse.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You got a question?
Is that the fact that estoppel, could you explain that?
I'm sorry.
The estoppel?
Yes.
Issue, could you explain what estoppel is?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, not everybody. Estoppel is where you, it could be an individual, it could be a municipality, takes certain action which prevents the other party from doing something. And they do that to their detriment, relying on what you have done. There are certain cases where estoppel can be invoked, and it's invoked often in private matters. But when you deal with municipal authorities, it's a different rule. Estoppel is almost never applied against a municipality. So, if my neighbor says to me, can I put a fence up between our properties? And I say, oh, sure, go ahead, put the fence up, and then I bring a lawsuit to ask them to take that fence down, I may be barred by the doctrine of estoppel that could apply to me. But if you go and get a permit from the town to put up a fence, and the fence is not permitted, it's over eight feet, and the restriction is six feet, or it was improperly granted, the town can revoke that permit, and no estoppel is applied. It's very, very rare. I mean, I, I can't, I mean, I can't remember a case where estoppel has been applied against municipalities. So, you always have the right to take action to enforce your zoning law. And there's a, there's a good reason for that, because you have to protect the public.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we have some individuals that want to make some comments, so let's start. Go ahead.
Okay. So, the first on the list is James Birchman.
I would just like to state, before general public comment begins, every speaker will be limited to three minutes, and we will time it. All right?
My name is James Birchman. I live in the town, my post office, Statsburg, but live in the town of Clinton, fairly close to the project. I'm here because of what was said the last time in the meeting where I was just shocked, where the representative of CENI said, forget what you've ever heard what a camp is. All you need to do is look at this definition of what the functions that are outlined here, and if you meet those functions, then you can call yourself a camp. Well, I can think of a number of rather risque ideas that would qualify as a camp. Okay? I think you can too. Reducto, just absurd, absurd ideas that would qualify as a camp, simply because they met the functional expression of what a camp has to, has to do. I would say that, again, you are the zoning board of appeals, and I think though it's, it is incumbent upon you to look deeply into the matter and not just accept an argument like that, that if it's a function, then you can call it a camp. I think you must use your common sense, and I think you must look into the origin of this regulation and why it was done, why it was called a camp. And if it violates that, then it certainly is not a camp. So, you had the example of the camp, the religious camp that exists. But again, I think it's hard to squeeze the definition of a camp, the rational definition of a camp, the reason that the law was established calling it a camp, into Sixth Senses with 240 employee, guests, 150 employees, year-round working, and discharging thousands and thousands of gallons of effluent into Crum Elbow Creek every day. So, I'm simply, I'm simply here to encourage you to use common sense, to use the definition of a camp as you understand it and as the town people of Hyde Park understood it when this law was made. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your remarks.
Next on the list is Deborah Haddock. She informed me she's severely speaking impaired and would like me to read her comment into the record, if I may?
Sure.
If I can get it in in three minutes.
Greetings, Town of Hyde Park. I wanted to share that I'm in favor of IHG/ Sixth Senses offering their wellness retreat center here. I believe the clientele enjoying this property would basically be there for education, conditioning, training, and activities. The property will no doubt offer excellent lodging and fine dining within accordance to the wellness of its clients and guests only. They will focus on staying on the property rather than in and out. With this said, I am familiar with the property for 40 years and have had a personal relationship with it. I lived there, lived there. While it is beautiful on every level, the grounds are outstanding, catering to wildlife, forestry, woodlands, and waterways. I am sure this will remain with these new owners. In fact, I have seen it, they care deeply about the property. Substantially, they already improved their bridge on the only existing driveway, bettering water, wildlife, and the natural waterway. I am confident the same will take place on this new driveway being even better. They have teams of engineers and legal professionals who work for them to accomplish a safe and common mission and objective, having an entrance and separate exit is a great idea. It will be safer, and it almost seems like not allowing this is a liability. I have been on this property for 25 years, and I have never had a problem getting in or out. It is like any home or other business on the long stretch of Route 9G. Countryside Animal Hospital and Deerview Gas Station are more problematic. No one complained about Old Stone Farms horse trailers and tour buses using 9G, which had more activity than Sixth Senses will. My family has lived in the house directly across from the planned new driveway for over 80 years. We live there today. We have no issues with Sixth Senses having a driveway on 9G in this location. Even George Naylor, back in the 60s and probably before that, used the driveway in Hyde Park property to access the Town of Platoon, 200 acres of land and homes. This new driveway sounds reasonable. I believe Sixth Senses can only make our area stronger, help the economy of our residents, and share our beautiful area with the world. Many of our local men and women have already been working on this property, getting a paycheck to feed their family and maintain their homes. How many more jobs will open? Our area needs them. Forcing this company to sell will only make it easy for a huge corporation to buy it and build 400, 600, 1,000 luxury apartments. Another unique village, as we see in Poughkeepsie with Eastdale and what's going, is going up in Reinbeck or the Housing and North Cross Road. Then there will be even more traffic exiting New York State Route 9G. I am asking the Town of Hyde Park Town Board, meaning CBA, to approve the, to approve the addition of these driveways, and I thank all of you in advance for your time, for your fair concern as shown with this. Thank you very much. Respectfully, Deborah Haddock.
Thank you for those remarks.
So, the next on the list is, I don't know if I can read the last name, it's Laura Rosmore, pardon, something, whoever lives at 179 Browns Pond Road. Sorry. There you go.
Move it up close to you.
Okay. Lori Rosman Platinum.
Thank you.
And I live at 179 Browns Pond Road in Statsburg. I'm Town of Hyde Park School District taxes and Town of Clinton Town taxes. I'm concerned about the environmental issues related to Crum Elbow Creek and Browns Pond, which border my property, and I feel the applicant has modified its application to circumvent the findings and decisions of the Town of Hyde Park. I implore the town to adhere to its decision and deny this application. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
T-R-A-U-D-T?
We got him.
Okay.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Got the spelling right. I'm Tom Traut. I'm from Reinbeck, to the north of your neighbors. My, I was town supervisor from 2008 to 2014.
Talk up.
Yeah, I have a weak speaking voice. So, anyways, I also served in the Dutchess County Sheriff's Office for 26 years and served in Hyde Park for a couple of years, too. Anyways, I'm here to address the issue of the concerns for the safety of the egress and ingress of the property, and I support the concepts that would mitigate safety concerns that could be affected here and smart planning growth concepts that would help to create a safer access into the property if needed. I support the idea that the applicant can use the Hyde Park portion of their land as an egress or ingress in adjoining Clinton land. From this, from what I understand, the actual use of the Clinton portion is not changing, so they should be able to use the cross, use or cross over their land in the future as they are permitted to do so today. I'm concerned for the safety on Route 9G, and I support these owners to improve the driveway, road, and bridge, and to add a secondary driveway, road, and bridge so that they can be, that entry should be, and exit point should be safer. 9G is the only way in and out of this property, and it's been that way for a long time, for as long as I know, probably 100 years or so. Not that I'm 100, but anyways. Let me see, I just kind of lost this. So, anyways, I'm sure we all have a concern for Route 9G. We may have even lost some friends on that road with the dangers, but I think we have to be mindful of the changes that are going to be needed for this. So, I support the concepts that are at hand, and I hope you approve them.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, very much. Appreciate it.
Next is John Vanderly.
Good evening. My name's John Vanderly. I live in the Town of Clinton, Hyde Park School District, Statsburg Post Office, and Reinbeck Town Hall.
You're all over.
All over. I got my start in this area over 50 years ago, actually, in Hyde Park. The reason my family stayed was because we admire the willingness of zoning boards to control growth and respect the role, beauty of this area. The Hudson Valley is a draw for tourism the way they're over because of the careful mix of bucolic and commercial attractions. That is by areas such as the Greenbelt are set aside not only to preserve its ecological values, but also to control the development not compatible with our image and to not destroy what we value this area for. The zoning board appeal, I understand, has spoken twice, only to be, I believe, insulted by the Sixth Senses, legal team for allegedly not doing its job. That's what I caught the last time. It is doing its job and reflecting the role of the people here, and I expect the board will hold fast and not be swayed by permutations or others from the beginning, an ill-conceived and destructive plan. The comparison with Victory Lake Camp is laughable. I used to live next door to it for many years, and I know exactly what it is. It's a religious family camp that receives no influx of family campers once a year to celebrate religious get-togethers. Perhaps Sixth Senses should institute religion and promote a project or such. Which they really can't because they shall not bear false witness, which is a nice way of saying you cannot tell lies, even if they are severely twisted to look like truths. The real truth is that their proposal is simply not compatible with this area, in many ways already stated here by so many citizens, citizens who did not even afford to participate in their programs. I trust that this zoning board will continue to do its job like it has been before, in spite of comments to the contrary. You know what they say about the, about the need to perceive that barking, talking duck? This, people, in spite of the legal fog, diesel duck. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments.
Next up is Mike Oats.
Good evening. My name is Mike Oats. I'm the president and CEO of the Hudson Valley Economic Development Corporation, and I appreciate your time tonight. We believe this project would be of great benefit to the Town of Hyde Park and the Hudson Valley region. It's completely in line with the Mid-Hudson Regional Council's strategy of live, work, and play, and we think this is, you know, a perfect example of that regional economic development strategy. What they are applying to do on their Hyde Park land seems very safety-oriented, and we believe that that's in line with smart zoning and the purpose of zoning. Again, I fully support the project, as does our organization. This group is wholeheartedly focused on sustainability, wellness, and community. This group is wholeheartedly focused on sustainability, wellness, and community and these are things that I think the town should and can get behind to support. We would like Hyde Park to consider the economic benefits of this project as well, drawing people into the region, a multiplier effect to our regional economy. We also believe there will be a great deal of jobs that are obviously created within the Dutchess County and local regions. So again, thank you for your time and we're, again, full supporters of what we believe is an important economic development project.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your remarks.
Donna Burns.
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Donna Burns. I live in Statsburg. I have to say, this project has been my introduction to land use law and zoning law and I now have a much greater appreciation of what all you do and zoning board of appeals do because it's something I really had no knowledge of before. So what I learned is that you as the zoning board of appeals is not powerless to submit to this legal word salad approach that Six Senses is taking and nor do you have to let this multi-billion dollar global corporation twist your laws into pretzels in order to allow them to accomplish their profit-driven goals. I, going through this camp, I was also very taken by what Tony Raplansky said, that this issue wasn't even really before you. It was not one of the original applications. It's not part of the decision. So it's interesting, it's creative, but it's not really before you. But I will note that with what IHG/ Six Senses is urging, Legoland would be qualified as a camp. The Rockin' Horse Ranch would be qualified as a camp. Mohawk Land House would be qualified as a camp. So you really do have to go back and use your common sense and as was noted by Mr. Perkins, that what is the intent of your law? And so regardless of whatever the Town of Clinton might come up with, and it has not reached, it's a determination yet of whether it's a hotel or a conference center, but regardless of what it calls as a test, it's a boundary law, you should see what this project for what it is. It's a lodging facility and it was noted in the Town of Clinton's zoning board of appeals determinations, if I go for a conference, let's say, there, what if I bring my spouse? What if I bring my children or my grandchildren? Do they have to register for a program? I mean, this whole program-based nature that we keep hearing about is absolutely irrelevant and neither does it matter that the Hyde Park parcel is small relative to the Town of Clinton parcel or that the representations about whether or not it's on the edge of Hyde Park, it doesn't matter to those neighbors who are right across the street in Hyde Park that it's on the edge of Hyde Park. They expect to enjoy the same Green Belt district protections. And one other thing that's quite misleading about how big the parcel is in the Town of Clinton, the reason for this is that most of the property on the Town of Clinton, and if you were at the site you see, is unbuildable. It's rocky outcroppings, it's wetlands, it's exactly the kind of terrain that...
Sorry, excuse me, that's three minutes.
Okay.
If you have continued comments, you can submit them in writing to the board secretary.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate it.
Next is Nob Plattner. Hopefully I'm getting that right.
Rob Plattner, 179 Browns Pond Road, married to Lori Rosemarin Plattner with the hard name. I just wanted to point out that Six Senses has testified that they will be holding weddings there. And when asked the question, I believe by the Town of Clinton, "Well, what about the fact that people are there for programs?", they said that, "Well, all the wedding guests would be required to take a program." And so I think that got a laugh, maybe that was at the Town of Clinton. But their testimony really has been very twisted to try to fit into, you know, something that really doesn't belong. When you look at them, they would like to be a hotel. They paid $13 million for the property and I certainly have very little faith that if they were allowed to do this, that they would be sticking to all the rules they said they would be applying. For example, having a wedding guest take a program and going home and not staying the night if, in fact, it was an afternoon wedding and they weren't doing something the next day. It just doesn't all fit. I think you guys recognize that. So we ought to just stick with what was decided already. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments.
David Schwartz.
Hello.
Good evening.
These will be the briefest comments of the...
Move it real close.
These will be the briefest comments of the evening. I know there's been a lot of discussion of camp and I'm not, or David Schwartz, 176 Cream Street, Hyde Park. I was under the impression that the Green Belt district allowed for, on large parcels, wedding and special events to be held. Is that not the case?
Depends on the, I think it depends on the space that's, how it's, if it's Green Belt or something else.
In the Green Belt.
Again, the application was not for a wedding venue or a rural event venue. That's not what the application was for.
Mm-hmm. I see.
So the determination is based on what the application contained and what the request was.
Right, right. It just struck me when an objection is made that a wedding may be held, if a wedding is permitted, then, well, you get the point.
Mm-hmm. Good. Thank you, sir.
It's like Wendy Maitland. Not sure if I got that right. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for the work that you do here. My name is Wendy Maitland. I'm a resident of Reinbeck. I was born and raised in the area, specifically in Statsburg with Hyde Park's Reinbeck Schools and Hyde Park Post Office. It's the whole morass. Which brings me to one point, which is that I think it's a very difficult proposition that we've got eight acres on this property in Hyde Park and then out of a total of 236 acres. So I know that that's not a legal comment, but that kind of blows my mind that this whole 200-plus acre property has to adhere to Hyde Park usage in order to get a proper entrance for the bulk of the property programming, which is all in the Town of Clinton. So I'll say transparently, I am in favor of your revoking the, you know, disallowing of this entrance. I think that it's a safety issue for a property that is quite sizable that whatever the programming is, almost doesn't matter. You have to have a safe entrance and you're not going to have a couple with no children living on a 236-acre property, you know, highly unlikely. So for safety reasons, off of the state road, which is Route 9G, it seems appropriate that a proper second entrance be allowed for safety purposes. And I also was the program who did the transaction from the seller to the buyer, again, completely transparently. And I say that mostly because I spent an ordinary amount of time with the principals who were working on this property and I learned a lot about Six Senses from the inside. I have visited Six Senses in other places around the world and I can tell you firsthand that as a guest, it is very different from a hotel. It is programmed and it is, the integrity that it adheres to in terms of environmental sustainability principles as well as health and wellness are real. And so I think that's important because it's being kind of bandied about like, of course, that's not going to happen. Well, I've seen it and it is what happens. It is what Six Senses does and I've stated hotels that are normal hotels, it's a very different.
One more minute.
Okay, thank you. So I'm here in support of the project to say that I have both experienced Six Senses and I've also experienced this group of principals and I find their integrity to be very genuine and I hope that, you know, rational, reasonable responses will prevail. I'm also a small business owner and I think this would be great for our economy and employment. I'm getting appealed to by potential employees all the time and I have to turn them down. They don't have jobs. So, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Emma Hanley.
My name is Emma Hanley. I live in Salt Point, but Hyde Park School District, Hyde Park Taxes. My route to work is on 9G. I pass by this property every single day. I'm having a baby in August, so safety is my number one concern and I really, really do think that this, what we're here for, which is this entrance improvement, is necessary. I also, even though I'm having a child, I for one would not want a Legoland situation in this property. Instead, I think that the area will be vastly improved by it, the value of the area and the jobs that it will create, high-paying jobs, unlike something like a Legoland or a real estate development or you name it, basically. So I also don't understand why you can't have a camp on one part of the property and a conference center on the other. I just don't really understand either. So I'm definitely in support of it and especially the improvements to the entryway that they're trying to make.
Thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more speaker. It looks like Dalla Magna. Am I saying that right?
It's Lomaniya Ramiswithlasagna.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Dalla Lomaniya and I live in Clinton, Rhine Valley Farm, that's my place, and we share a one-mile border with the property and we wish them well. We wish that they do something there that makes their $13 million investment pay off. What they're planning makes no sense to me. I don't see how they're going to fill that place up every night with $1,500 a night guests, year in and year out, coming there for programs. When I watch Omega, who I'm involved with, barely make it, only operate for eight months and need donors to make their budgets work, I think we'd be doing them a great favor not to allow this to happen. Big corporations, they hire very capable people to get what they think what they want and I admire their team. They're very good. But I wish it was something else they were doing that makes it, for them, worthwhile for their investment. And finally, you know, it's kind of strange because when you think about it, because we're having to shoehorn this project into a certain way of being, the community can't even go there. We're not allowed to go there, so we're basically losing all this land to the international Back to how they're going to get people to show up? I mean, how are they going to get them there? I mean, are they going to helicopter them in? People who spend $1,500 a night? I mean, these are kind of special people who have that. So my conclusion is, it'd be great if they weren't allowed to do this plan, but let's find something else that they could do that would work.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
That's all the speakers. I have signed up.
All right. Do you have some comments that you'd like to make?
Yes, thank you.
Please.
Thank you. We're back. So just want to address some of the issues that were raised tonight. Excuse me. So for the first time tonight, we heard a claim about a potential jurisdictional issue that we're not even properly before the board. This is, this is not right. Right now, we've appealed to your board and you have the authority to step into the shoes of Ms. Moss and make the decision that ought to have been made. The reason that a particular use was not proposed on this application to move the road is because for the past 19 years, the commercial road existed and was considered access to an allowable use. The Town of Hyde Park approved permits to improve this road several times over the course of 19 years. So there's no reason why an applicant would have felt that it had to make a legal case for a particular use when it was submitting the same type of application that had been submitted previously and approved without any kind of issue. So when Ms. Moss denied the application, saying that the use was not permitted, that is why we are before you now and that now is our opportunity to tell you why that was an incorrect determination and why you should find that the use is permitted. So we are properly before you. The arguments are properly being made. Yes, the initial application didn't call out any particular uses and that is because it was assumed that the use was permitted because it's been permitted for the past 19 years. Second, the access road. Mr. Raplansky talked about case law and how we agree with his cases. It's not necessarily that we agree or disagree with his cases, we just think his cases are irrelevant. He's arguing that you cannot have an access in Hyde Park to access a use in the Town of Clinton unless the use would also be permitted in Hyde Park. That is essentially the case law that's been provided and that's true. If you're going to have an access road, which may be different from a mapped road and other, a public road, that's what the case law says. So here, that actually requires you to consider the different uses and what would be permitted and how would it be permitted if it were in Hyde Park. Of course, the definitions don't match. Even if we were in a hotel situation and lodging facility situation, those definitions don't match. I think it would be very rare to find a set of matching definitions between two communities for commercial uses because each community has this authority to define their uses differently. So if it were a hotel and hotels were permitted and if it were a lodging facility in Hyde Park, Mr. Raplansky would still be arguing that there'd be a horse and a zebra mix.
Sorry, just to clarify, the lodging facility definition in Hyde Park includes a hotel? Is a hotel motel inn or other establishment?
That's true, but it is, the term is lodging facility. And so we're not saying that the terms have to match. We're saying you need to look at the underlying use and determine what that use would be in Hyde Park.
You see a difference between hotel and lodging?
As the terms are defined in each community, they're somewhat analogous in Clinton and Clinton's definition of a hotel is analogous, almost, you know, the words are slightly different, to Hyde Park's definition of a lodging facility.
And lodging?
Mm-hmm. And what's interesting is Clinton has determined it's not a hotel and we are hoping they will re-determine that within the next few weeks.
Do you see a distinct difference between hotel and lodging as you see it in terms of the project?
As those terms are defined in each of the municipalities.
Yes.
I think as those terms are defined in each municipality, they are analogous, but in general, a lodging facility in this project are different because a lodging facility is a place where you go primarily as a place to sleep and then you drive out and you go see sights somewhere else and then you come back to your lodging facility.
Just to clarify, our definition does not specify the primary purpose, it just allows for overnight accommodations for paying transient guests.
Right. It talks about accommodations for paying transient guests, which is different than some of the other uses which have conditions on that use. So we talked about other places could have paying transient guests, but that doesn't make it necessarily a lodging facility.
Okay.
So it's, I mean, someone called it word salad, but this, you're zoning board members and word salad is your forte.
The understanding of the definition is very important for this board and is a part of our decision.
So I just, I'm not sure which definition you're asking about. Hyde Parks or Clintons?
How would you define a hotel as you're defining it in your program?
It's, our program is not a hotel.
Okay. And why isn't it a hotel?
Because it is program-based. So in a hotel, from, I think what you're asking me, a hotel as defined in Clinton, anyone can call up, make a reservation, you can pull over on the side of the road, walk into the counter and say, "Hey, do you have any beds tonight?" And you go there, you sleep, maybe they have a workout room, maybe they have a restaurant downstairs, but the primary function of that... me, a hotel as defined in Clinton, anyone can call up, make a reservation. You can pull over on the side of the road, walk into the counter and say, hey, do you have any beds tonight? And you go there, you sleep. Maybe they have a workout room. Maybe they have a restaurant downstairs. But the primary function of that facility is a place for overnight accommodations. This facility is different, because you're going there for the programming. Some people won't be able to stay overnight. There's not enough rooms for everyone to stay overnight. Some programs won't allow you to stay overnight. It's first and foremost about the wellness programs.
So your difference is the programming, in your eyes?
Correct.
If you define, in your eyes, a lodging facility, is that different?
Right. Lodging facility, the primary function would be for transient overnight accommodation.
Okay, so both hotel and then do that, and they don't have the programmatic component?
Right. Here, the programmatic component, the health and wellness recreational programming, is a prerequisite to even getting on the property. You can't even drive into the property unless you are enrolled or registered in a program.
So the program connection, so does conference center come into that?
So in Clinton, this program-based approach is a conference center.
Okay.
So yes.
Not a hotel, not a lodging center?
Correct. Clinton has distinguished a hotel from a conference center. And a conference center is a place, and I can pull the definition, where people are going for this program and recreational-based instruction.
Okay.
And just like conference center is different from hotel, we are saying here that camp is different from lodging, because again, the camp is for recreational and instructional purposes. That's the distinguishing feature.
So you really want this to be called a conference center?
Well, I think conference centers, as Hyde Park has treated it, is part of camp. We've been talking about Camp Victory Lake. And, you know, I want to caution the board about just deferring every single use on that property to religious use, because I think that creates a pretty big loophole to say that, well, we allowed anything you want as a religious use. Instead, I think you have to look at the application and identify that that use is partly religious. There's a church. There are, you know, some religious gatherings. But also, it came in under camp.
But I think under this case with-
And camps allow conferences.
With Camp Victory, I think the fact that it's religious takes first prime, primary, and then from that, you can add other things.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I want to caution you on that approach, that if you're religious, you can do whatever you want. I think there, I think that, that actually is creating a very big loophole. Whereas when we talk about program-based facilities, you have to demonstrate and prove that you have real programming, and the conditions of approval are going to require programming. So this is not, this is not opening the floodgates. I don't know what kind of adult uses that other man was thinking about, but this is not opening the floodgates to anything nefarious. This is, this is, you know, someone mentioned Omega. This is for people to come, experience the Green Belt District, experience nature, experience recreation and wellness activities and instruction.
Okay. Thank you.
So just going back to the access road issue, when the access road was first put in for a commercial use, it was serving a use called a dude ranch in the town of Clinton. Hyde Park did not have an analogous use, whether, you know, you would have called it lodging facility, camp. We think it was probably most like a camp at the time. But for 19 years, this access road served that use. And there was some implicit understanding that it could continue. We talked about a stopple. And a stopple is this concept that the town is allowed to make mistakes, right? You can't, you can't say, gotcha. So if someone erroneously got a permit because they misread the code, or, you know, the building inspector was having a bad day and transcribed some numbers, they can take that back, because towns are allowed to make mistakes. This is not a 19-year mistake. This is really a change based on public opposition. Mr. Raplansky was writing to the zoning administrator at the time that she was reviewing the application for the road. So to simply say that, you know, towns can make mistakes, too bad, it's not really right. We're asking you to consider what the use of the property would be if it were in Hyde Park.
Doesn't municipal stopple also require some sort of bad action from the town, either a purpose to delay or commit fraud against an applicant?
I mean, that is a reason why, why we have a stopple, right? But there are cases, for instance, there's a case of Orange Town v. McGee, where applicants have gotten vested rights when a municipality changed its mind. Here, there was a commercial use, purchased for 19 years. You know, the applicant here purchased the property in reliance on the existing commercial approvals. And then that was taken away. So query whether they have a vested right. We are not here tonight to talk about the future taking's claim.
I don't think anything was taken away, right? They're still able to operate as the way that they were.
I, I leave that to you and your attorney to discuss. I think there are different ways to read the determination, because right now, the use in Clinton is approved as a conference center. So if you, if the access to the conference center is not allowed, then it's not allowed, unless it's allowed-
I thought it was a dude ranch.
Well, it was a dude ranch in 2005. Clinton changed its zoning. So this is what I'm saying. Terminology changes, and that's why we really look at the underlying use. How is the property being used? Because the terms, the terms always change. So even after all that is said, applicant has used this property in a commercial way and its predecessors for a very, very long time. So even if you end up not agreeing that this falls under that very broad camp use and commercial recreation use, we are asking that you use your authority, which the board gave you when it adopted the zoning, to modify the zoning on the Hyde Park parcel to allow this drive. You know, we've presented in our papers a number of reasons why we think you should exercise that power. It's what you do when you look at area variances. You know, you balance the detriment to the community, to the benefit to the applicant. We want you to make that same kind of benefit analysis, that balancing test, to find that allowing this access road to continue, where again, allowing the access road to continue to a use that has been in existence for almost 19 years, and not taking away all potential, potential economically viable use of the property, you know, weighs in favor of the applicant.
Well, I'm confused. The road is there, used every day.
Correct.
What are we taking away?
That, that's why we're here. Because you, at this point, the determination, as I read it, and I, you know, I defer to the town attorney, says that the access is not permissible to serve a conference center.
So are we going to pump the gate?
I hope not. But-
Well, they could be issued violations of the town.
But-
If the board finds that it's not an allowable use.
So you're not only taking away future uses, you're taking away the existing use of this property.
However, foretaking, there would have to be no viable use permitted under any allowable use in the Green Belt District.
Right, right.
Well, also, though, you look at reasonable expectations under the taking analysis. And at a $13 million purchase, a single-family home is not going to, it's not going to cover that.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Board members, any, any other questions? Okay. What we're going to do-
Chairman-
I'm sorry, go ahead. Yes.
I would like to note for the record that, yes, Mr. Raplansky did send me letters. I did not read them, because I thought there may be an issue. If I had read them, I didn't read them after, until after the decisions were made.
Okay. Thank you. What we're going to do then is we are going to close the public hearing, which completes the opportunities for anybody to make comments. We will hold open for the next, what, two or three weeks?
That's up to the board.
I'll say the next three weeks, if there are comments that want to be sent.
Oh, just comments.
I'm sorry.
Because the room is not going to be available for a while.
Yes, written comments.
Written comments, written comments. If you want to add anything to the record, then we will be looking at that. We anticipate then, at the next meeting, that we will be making a decision of the board here. We want to take that time because of all of the information that has been sent by everybody, and we do appreciate that. We need to go through that again and make sure that we understand the focus of what our decision is. We do appreciate all the comments, both, on both sides. They have a lot of logic, and so we've got to sort out the logic here.
Chairman, may I just ask that you specify the date and time for comments, so we're all on the same page?
The last day.
No, we, the board should not accept comments the day of the decision. I would suggest the Wednesday before the board's next meeting.
Okay, that would be a week before, and so the comments need to be in, that would be June. We meet on the 26th. So the comments need to be in by the 19th of June.
At 4:00 p.m.?
Yes.
That's at 4:00 p.m.
Mm-hmm. I'm sorry, yes.
Yes.
Okay. If there are no other comments, I would move to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you very much. And I would move to adjourn this meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much for coming and for your comments. We appreciate it. Use both exits.